Okay, we'll get started. We call this meeting in the Jameson City Council Board Session to order. Clark, please call the roll.
Councilmember Sheldon.
Here.
Brockman.
Here.
Reynolds.
Present.
Waltner.
Present.
Russell.
Here.
D'Vercio.
Here.
Eckley.
Here.
And President Doyle. Here. It's time. We'll give anybody here a chance in the public if they'd like to address the council. Please leave your name and address. I'm limited to remarks to five minutes. Anybody here want to speak tonight? All right. Hold on. Everybody wants to talk? That's good.
Want to talk about the phenomenal shirt that Randy has on?
I know, it's brand new. I had it for today.
What bowl did he do?
Nice, yeah.
What's on the bowl?
All right.
This time, we do have a couple of updates, presentations. We'll keep a full disclosure program as well as the grant update and bird scooters. You're going to update what you discussed with Zach and the other chairs.
Actually, I'll preface that first. So I wanted to, first off, for those councilmembers that had not met him, Stephen Neelens is joining us today. He is our Digital Equity and Communications Coordinator for the city. He was originally hired under the Affordable Connectivity Program grant from the FCC and has been working to help us get folks enrolled in broadband. I'll talk about this, but I asked him to give you guys an update since it's been Aug- August, is that right?
August, yeah.
Came on board and wanted to talk a little bit about the work he's been doing, how it's been going. And then I think he may add a little bit more on some of the communication side as well for the city. You may have seen some of the videos he's been making and the things he's been pushing out on behalf of the city. So with that, the floor is yours. Steve.
Thank you, Teddy. Thanks, everyone. Like I mentioned, I started in August as the Digital Equity and Communications Coordinator through the FCC ACP program. So, I'm taking the next slide. So the ACP program, what is it? It is essentially is a federally funded program where low-income housing can receive, low-income housing recipients can receive thirty dollars off their monthly bill. In Jamestown, through some of the various requirements, two-hundred percent of the poverty level, a lot of the times people on SNAP or any sort of federal assistance are usually eligible. And it breaks down to be about sixty-five percent of the city is eligible for this program. Currently, we have a lot of participation in it, but we're really trying to close the gap. Right now, we're at about sixty-six hundred households that are participating in this program. But there still is, there's, it really should be, for something that's for thirty dollars in free funding a month, that really should be a little bit higher. So we're just, we're going everywhere that we can to really promote it. Schools, City of Living, Jameson Housing Authority, then going to just various events, just trying to get just awareness up, get people signed up. A lot of the time, the people that we're trying to get don't have access to a computer and it's really walking them through the entire process, especially when we're working with our seniors. So just really making sure everyone has access and an opportunity to participate. It is thirty dollars off a month. A lot of the time, that takes their bill down to nothing. And so for someone maybe on the fence who doesn't have internet and the idea of having, wanting to sign up for internet when it's free, that's also very appealing. So just from working through lots of different, lots of different types of people, I've met so many residents in there and everyone has different stories and concerns and needs. But this is really just a good way for residents to save a little bit of money every month. It's a program that's being funded. There is a limit to it. There hasn't really been, it's, they're kind of letting the program go for as long as it can go. So as long as the program's going, we're going to be, keep promoting it and giving people the opportunity to save thirty dollars off their, off a month. And I guess that could probably go to the next slide. This will explain the other, so the requirements. So you see the two-hundred percent of the federal poverty guideline, of the federal poverty rate. People working in SNAP, people using SNAP, Medicaid, there's a variety of different things. And I guess the next slide. So this is, look at Jamestown. So right now, approximately sixty percent of households meet requirement of being at two-hundred percent of the poverty level. Additionally, most families with children in the Jamestown Public School system are eligible as well. So this is another, that's just adding to that number of families that are eligible. And we've been reaching out to, so, and then finally, the Section Eight Housing Program or Jamestown Housing Authority is eligible. So we've been reaching out to the Jamestown Public Schools, to Jamestown Housing Authority, various community leaders, trying to be involved in as many events as going on, that are going on as possible. For example, I met with Joe Gerossia a few months ago and they had to redo their lease agreement with everyone at the Hotel Jamestown and the high-rise apartments. And so Joe invited me to be part of that when people were going in to redo their leases. I was also there signing people up that were interested. And we signed up a lot of people that way through the program and just a lot of awareness. And I think walking with something that's so technology and especially some people are more reluctant to jump on. And I think there's been some bad players, like maybe in the past saying, like, this is treating, like, treating heavy different programs that weren't quite this. And so there's some confusion sometimes. So what we're really trying to do is just promote that this is a City of Jamestown program. You can call me and I'll walk you through. And I've done that many times, going down to just different Hotel Jamestown residents and signing them up in person. So it's just doing everything we can to get people signed up. Signing the next slide. So this is kind of a look at where we've gotten to. So we started the year at five thousand one hundred twenty-seven households that were subscribed to the ACP. And currently, we're at sixty-six thousand thirty. So we've just, over, it's a little skewed because that's from January and then August, this is just recorded months. But you can still see, we're at sixty-six thousand, or sixty-six hundred, and we probably would have about fourteen hundred more people that were trying to get signed up that would be eligible. So it's just getting the word out as much as possible, going to different community events, going to fairs, all the festivals that we have, just having a presence and tabling there and just getting people signed up. So, next slide. So just some of the signups that we've done. So we've done the high-rise and Hotel Jamestown, James Kennedy S. Library, YWCA Latino Heritage Festival, different Jamestown Public School open houses. We've been working with the BPU, we've been including their newsletter and doing some of their, just some signups in their lobbies when there's busy days. Labor Day Festival. And then, yeah, finally, we've come a long way since August, but there's more work to be done. Feel free to reach out if you have any questions on anything. I mean, feel free to reach out. I'm always available and looking to help out, especially if there's events or if you know individuals who may apply to this. Feel free to reach out to me directly or we also direct people. You have on your tables, you have our sheets that we hand out to interested people. It's jamestownny.gov/freeinternet. That's where we direct people and they can sign up there as well. And then, yeah, I guess last slide, just the website. And so, yeah, that's kind of everything that I had. If anyone has any questions, I'd love to answer.
Absolutely, I agree. In terms of, a lot of the people that I work that would fit in those categories are using what people are calling the free phones that you get. How compatible are they with this program? Because in many cases, they have very limited access to internet. You have to be with a particular provider, you know? So some of them have bought a phone from a particular place or got the free phone and they don't work very well and may not have the capacity for what you're doing. I guess that's my question.
So through the site, without knowing the specifics, like the specific provider, I know that the process when we sign someone up, it's about a five to ten minute process. And essentially, they get a code at the end of it. And so that code is universal through any provider. So if they're using, they're using.
They don't have to name, but any other provider that provides internet, they would get a thirty dollar discount.
They would get a thirty dollar discount. Yeah, so they really, the option, for most people, it's if they have an existing provider that they're using, they can apply that code that they receive after about a ten-minute application. And they get, they get the code right away. Or if there's someone who is, doesn't have internet at all, they would go to any provider that they were interested in going with and that would, they would apply that to their.
And what would then be the limitations in terms of data usage, et cetera, for those kind of phones? Is there a limit to the data usage?
So there's no limit on the plan. So if someone is, if someone is eligible for it, they could, if they want to have a phone or if they want to have an internet bill or a data plan that has like a hundred up. And, or if they want someone that wants maybe five hundred up and a certain amount, it really just, it applies the thirty dollars off their bill no matter what. If they're eligible, it gives them a thirty dollar discount. There's not like a, it's not like a tiered rate, like.
Marie, I also had, we're required by the FCC to be provider agnostic. So we're not allowed to, whichever one they want to use, we're able to work with.
No, I understand that, but the capacity that, you know, a lot of the people that don't even have that kind of a phone to have the capacity to what you're talking about? Where they only get calls at certain times, they get calls from other cellphones they can't get from a landline because the phones don't work. So that's what I'm saying. I can see why you're probably not reaching a lot of the individuals in the community because some of them don't even have the type of phone that would work or have any internet. And the internet that they do have, it's just the phone with very limited.
Yeah. I will say, so we, through a lot of the events that we've been doing recently, especially the Target events have been, like the Hotel Jamestown, just trying to have awareness. And when there's things like that, when people are specifically signing, looking to sign up, those always work the best. So we've kind of tried, we've been trying to raise awareness, be in the community a lot. And especially just having someone, having the City of Jamestown behind it, I think puts a lot of people at ease where if we were, they know, they know that we're just on the road and they see City of Jamestown, they trust us. If they were seeing, get thirty dollars off, and they might be skeptical if it, that it had that, the city support behind it.
No, no, thanks for answering my questions. I just wanted to make sure because like I said, there is some sort of a disconnect with some of the people that can't even afford what you're, the type of phone or internet service you're providing.
Obviously, this stops when the grant is up, correct?
Correct, correct. So this, this funny, it's, there's been different, different places that have estimated when it would, when it'll stop. But, yeah, this is, for now, I mean, it's, the people who have been taking advantage of it from the start have saved hundreds of dollars. And so it's just trying to get people, really, most of the time when I'm talking to someone, it's, would you like to spend ten minutes? And I mean, sorry, say, like, you'll save thirty dollars a month right now, probably, if you're not, if you're, if you've never heard of this program. There's a great chance that you're going to save thirty dollars right now after ten minutes and at least, and then monthly, it applies to their bill every month. It's not, it's not like they have to reapply every month or apply it once, once it's applied, once David says like that, until the program ends.
And this really came to fruition because of COVID and kids in schools not being able to have access to affordable internet for online schooling, correct?
Correct. And, yeah, a lot of the, when you think of the, just the requirements in schools and like a Zoom call, sometimes you'll have internet. But if you don't have broadband internet and can't, if you can't get on a Zoom call and talk with your class, it's not, you might as well not have internet at that point. So just the need for a higher-speed internet, yeah, this program is trying to help that out and help those families who are just trying to get thirty dollars a month.
That's one discount for households, correct?
Correct.
If there's four or five or handful of children, it's just one, one discount for the dollar.
Correct.
Do you have any communication on when this is ending? Because everything I'm seeing right now says it's possibly ending in the spring of 2024, but the White House is asking it to go till December of 2024. But that hasn't been, we can't find anything else.
Yeah, right now, I haven't had any direct communication of them saying when it will end. Everything, everything that I've been hearing, we have monthly meetings, has been just presenting the information so that they, when they propose it to Congress to make the case that this is important, that people are using this. So nothing as far as a timeline, I haven't heard anything. But I do know that they say that this is, they're gathering data and they're showing the importance of it and why people need this. And that's, that's been the message of the FCC.
But I believe that under ACP, either you can get your internet or your phone service. You know, one of the two, they don't let you do both.
Oh, so it's, so it's, it's a thirty dollar off, if it's through a company that does both, they would just apply it, they would apply it once off of, off your total.
That's if a company does both. I'm talking about if you have Cricket. See, they allow ACP, but there's other companies that don't. But if they do and they, and on their records, if they know that you're getting the thirty dollars off the internet, Cricket, they nullify your phone discount.
Through the FCC, it's a one-time, it's a one-time thirty, it's a dollar off.
Okay.
Can I ask a question? May I ask a question? Yes, no? I just wonder, I had seen on the BPU's website and it said, free internet. And I was just curious because I do get the program and it is thirty dollars off and it's like thirty-nine dollars a month. So when you say free to people, they think free. They don't think forty dollars a month, so it's.
So it does, it does apply, so it is possible, that's where it depends on the level of internet that they receive. Some people, some people actually will receive a credit if they have like a twenty-five dollar internet plan. They actually do receive, they'll receive a five dollar credit, so it's.
Sign me up. I mean, I don't, I just, I mean, I have the lowest of the low because I live alone and just have, you know, my phone and my TV. So I signed up about a year and a half ago.
Yeah.
You know, and I've been, I've been through Windstream. So Windstream also has that spectrum too, so.
Yeah.
That's why it's kind of like probably hard for you to get people to sign up for it. That's, I, that's, that's just.
Yeah, I think, I think it's been, so like if you're getting a, like a, it really just, yeah, depends on the internet. It does apply, it just, it applies thirty dollars off. So it's, a lot of the time, that is free with the internet, but it isn't always free.
No, that's the reason. Because they charge you for all the, you have to pay for the machine, you have to pay for the this and that. I mean, my bill just went up from twenty-nine to thirty-nine. So it was like, I called and asked because I was like, what's going on? You know, I thought maybe I got, the program ended and it didn't. But when their prices go up, our prices go up. So I just was curious because I saw that and I think I saw it on the city's page in, on the BPU and I'm like, free internet? It's not, you know, like, I want free internet.
The last thing we wanted to do was also gave you an update on the Bird scooters. So the eyelids program has completed, at least for this season. We did give you just kind of a breakdown of some of the data. I don't know, Zach, if you want to.
Yeah.
Just walk through it briefly. For the time period that we had, scooters, we had fifty scooters?
Yes.
Fifty scooters and randomly two e-bikes that showed up.
At the end.
So, at the end.
Yeah, so the Bird scooters were out for fifty-eight days. Got pulled at the beginning of November, pretty much, they will go until the snow flies and until it ends. So we anticipate them coming back in May. Right now, they're being stored. So as you can see here, the total numbers of rides, it's about eighty rides per day, forty-six hundred overall. We did see a decline near the end when the weather got colder. Does make sense, but this is intended to be more of a, you know, spring, summer, early fall program. So we obviously got some pretty nice weather there at the beginning. So the ridership was, was pretty solid, seven hundred seventy-one week users. So a lot of people did, did take advantage of the program and we had a lot of people who used it consistently as well. Over six thousand miles traveled, that is an average distance traveled, one point four miles, and an average trip duration of just under thirteen minutes. So again, just wanted to give you a quick update. Don't want to take up too much of your time. Happy to answer any questions. If I can't answer it, I'll certainly move along. But again, it's been a year-long pilot program, so I know you guys have a decision to make for next year, whether you want to continue the program. But we did see pretty good ridership immediately for a program that lasted less than two months. So happy to answer any questions, yeah?
What was the city's revenue on this two-month period?
This would have been probably, I guess, just under a thousand dollars. It's not really a huge revenue generator. Obviously, we get twenty percent per ride at a flat fee. So I don't believe we've received a check-in unless we have from Bird.
I haven't seen them make a purchase.
So we meet with them semi-regularly, so, thought with that, but it's a, it's a flat fee per ride. We don't get more money for a long ride.
Do you have any?
Just no Dunkirk, I was complaining that they got like two hundred bucks for the whole summer, so obviously, we're doing better than that.
Yeah, yeah.
On the unique users, any data on the demographics?
I do actually have some good data that I can share with you guys on commuting. So they do, they do track where people, if they start somewhere, go somewhere, and then eventually come back to the same spot within a certain amount of time. They do that, actually, we have a high number of that and a high number of that's coming from the college.
Oh, really?
So I can see, I can see if I can pull the, like, the heat map for you guys to see where that ridership is going. But we did have a number of quote-unquote commuters come kind of from the college towards like downtown for that and then back.
I hadn't thought about that, but since there really aren't a lot of buses that run between the colleges, one of the complaints is that, especially if students who are living in the dorms don't have access to transportation.
Yeah.
So I never thought, I never thought about it being a commuting vehicle or things like that.
Yeah, yeah, so, and I believe that they get a discount on it as well. There's two ninety. They get like half off with the normal.
Was there?
Might be more popular.
Yeah, and next year, I think there's going to be about fifty bikes next year. They're putting them out and that's probably going to be more popular since there, obviously, more people are used to riding bikes.
Well, the food access is limited on the campus and that having an option would be really good. I didn't, I never had, you don't envision what the uses are, that's what I was asking. But the age, looking at, were there any demographics on how, like, age-wise? I thought it was limited to, could kids under eighteen?
Only eighteen and over could.
Then how was it that you would see kids that were younger than that?
I'm assuming they probably used their, their parents' stuff.
Well, question was, were they using the parents with authorization or were they?
Right.
Question.
One, one last note before you guys, obviously, we're welcome to ask for questions. We are analyzing that data, making sure we add some more, no ride zones in there, especially around schools. We had some complaints around there, so carving out more areas around schools, we can geofence out any areas we don't want to go. We already geofenced out all the parks other than paths, as well as kind of large parking lots in the city, since that's where most accidents tend to happen in like, you know, grocery store parking lots, you know, the tops there.
Do we know how many were damaged or?
I do not, I can certainly ask, but.
Because I'm assuming.
Not as many as you would think. We spoke with the manager and he was surprised that I think there was probably a handful that were kind of intentionally damaged. There were some that were damaged for just wear and tear. And so they were working with Bird to, I think, cycle out the scooter so they get a bit newer model. But not, if I remember correctly, said about a handful. We'll get you the number.
Yeah, you can confirm that these scooters were, they were previously in Dunkirk and they were previously in another spot before that, so they were older scooters. They're going to get, a bunch of them will be, will be newer versions of them. And they will have additional like safety features on them as well.
For doing it, which comes from there.
I'm just, I believe, yeah, they kind of shipped them down to the new fleet manager.
Just another question, maybe the chief can answer this. The safety issue, how many, was there any major issues, complaints, people getting pulled over, say arrested, but, you know?
The only issue, the biggest issue I can think of was when somebody ran into a car on one. Which was the operator, operator of the scooter's fault.
The operator of the scooter, I'm sorry, I couldn't hear you. What did you say? I couldn't hear the people talking.
The operator of the scooter was at fault.
Was at fault, okay.
Because I know that was a concern when we hear complaints from other municipalities about, you know, issues with them. But just want to make sure that, probably get, we'll get more of a sense of it next year if we have a longer season with it to see what it looks like over the course of certain months.
Our fleet manager for Bird has been fairly responsive and worked really well with us for the most part. We had some initial communication issues just between Bird and the fleet manager. But once those things got worked out and he just started coming to us directly, we've kind of, we've, it's been phenomenal, so.
Thank you. All right, I'll move on to the main reports. Marie, you want to do housing first?
Sure, we had a meeting, the first question, actually, someone joined the meeting after to discuss the condition of homes doing package delivery. That it cited something that we're all familiar with, rental properties and other properties where the conditions, windows are not there necessarily. The steps are in not very good shape, junk and debris, which are all the complaints that we get through the Department of Development. But I guess it's an eye-opener when you really go door to door and start. But I guess it's an eye-opener when you really go door to door and start looking at some of the conditions of homes and how they're kept. Um, we talked about, you know, taking pride in neighborhoods and keeping up properties. It's, you know, not just the landlord's responsibility, but the tenants as well. And so we had a good discussion about that, but it is very revealing when you actually go door to door and not, and walk up on people's porches to see the kinds of conditions that are out there, so. It wasn't a surprise, but it was brought up and mentioned. Um, also had a question from an individual concerning the Healthy Homes Grant Program. Um, the Director of Development agreed to look into it because an individual said, as was noted, it was on a first-come, first-served basis. And the individual that contacted me had said that they were here very early, had made an application, um, and wanted to know why they got waitlisted. Um, they said, you have not been denied, but there is a waitlist, and they were concerned about that. But that was the, just, there were no resolutions, obviously, but that was the, um, pretty much the high points of the meeting, so that was it.
Kimmy, want to define it?
Sure. We had eight resolutions and one renewed business, and then also a discussion about the twenty-twenty-four budget. So on the resolutions, um, first resolution was, uh, that the mayor's authorized into an agreement with Vector Solutions in the amount of eleven thousand, four hundred, thirty-five dollars and no cents for one year of services, provided to the city of Jamestown with regard to mand- mandatory training. Uh, Vector is a new vendor, but this is, as the mayor discussed, this is something that the BPU uses, and that was approved. Resolution number two is that the city of Jamestown applied for state funding under the New York State Division of Criminal Justice Services Domestic Violence Intervention Program for twenty-twenty-three. And it is resolved that the mayor and police chief, that they are hereby authorized and directed to participate in the Domestic Violence Intervention Program for a period of one year with a funding amount of one hundred forty-six thousand, seven hundred ninety-five dollars and no cents. That was approved, congratulations. Resolutions number three, four, and five are all change orders, um, on the vehicle maintenance facility. The resolution number three is a change order, excuse me, number one, with a savings of eighteen thousand, nine hundred and thirty dollars, which was approved. Resolution number four is for an increase of fifteen thousand and sixty-six dollars, that was approved. And resolution number five is an increase of two thousand, seven hundred and ninety-two, that was approved. The net change is a savings of one thousand and seventy-two dollars. Resolution number six and seven are, are linked. Um, resolution number six is that the mayor and Mark Ritzer, P.E., Acting Director of Public Works and Acting Director of Parks Recreation and Conservation, being they hereby are authorized and directed to purchase for the Department of Public Works from Nest Wireless Global of Flushing cameras and lighting upgrades for the parking ramps project for a total amount not to exceed one hundred seventy-eight thousand, nine hundred and ten dollars and no cents. And resolution number seven, and Mark, could you please correct me if I'm wrong, or if we are wrong, is this is just for the cameras? And the other one is for the electrical work and the maintenance, or?
Electrical work and installation.
Installation, okay.
It's also for the, uh, number six is also for lighting upgrades in, uh, Spring and Cherry Street.
Hmm, okay. So the second resolution is for seventy thousand, seven hundred and seventy dollars and forty-eight cents. I guess the big thing is we, we really don't know where we're going to pay for this from. Um, but also that we have an open-ended grant that was applied for on this, that we haven't heard yet, that we, we don't know a timing when we're gonna hear on, is that according to the mayor, do you know more about that? Okay.
That, that is accurate, that's actually a, a police grant that was applied for, for the camera portion.
So it would only cover?
Just the camera portion.
Which I don't know how much that is of the seventy thousand, because Mark is telling me that's lighting too.
No, the seventy thousand is just for purchase of the cameras, and then.
So the lighting work is really in the one hundred and seventy-eight, is what you're saying, okay.
Were there any other bids for the installation?
Uh, yeah, we had three bidders.
Any local?
Uh, yeah.
It was in your backup.
Yeah, so Nest Wireless is using a local, um, electrician for their subcontractor.
I don't know who the little bidder was, I just looked at it in the meeting too.
Uh, Nest Wireless was the little bidder, uh, followed by Ulstrom Schaefer, and then Beck Electric.
So I guess I'm looking for some ideas of where we're going to pay for this from.
And that was for forty-four total cameras, um, eighteen in the Cherry Street ramp and twenty-six in Spring Street.
It was mentioned contingency.
Is something that you'd take for CEBG money?
Can you say that again?
Is it just about if it's gonna be CDBG money can be used for?
I don't know that we have it. We definitely don't have one hundred and seventy-eight thousand.
Two hundred and forty-nine, six hundred and eighty is the total.
Oh, okay, yeah, and we definitely don't have that.
Um, we do have, uh, Carol had just pointed out, we do have some funding that, uh, is from interest on our rescue plan funds, is that correct?
Yes, um, what was budgeted last year, I believe, for twenty-twenty-three was nineteen thousand dollars. I transferred the funds, I believe it was in July, and we've been averaging between forty-five and forty-seven thousand a month in interest for those that would not have been included in, as revenue in the budget for twenty-twenty-three.
Can you put together some numbers for us, and I absolutely wish to.
And just to be clear, that, that would not be coming out of ARPA, that's just interest on the funds.
But whatever we can't use is gonna have to come from somewhere, and if it's the council's desire to go from ARPA, or where? So those are waiting for more information. Uh, we did have one new resolution.
The number eight.
Oh, sorry, number eight, I'm sorry. Um, number eight is resolved that the mayor, Mark Ritzer, P.E., Acting Director of Public Works and Acting Director of Parks Recreation and Conservation, being hereby are authorized and directed to hire Greenman Peter- Peterson of Buffalo, New York to provide a professional engineering and construction services for the replacement of the city's municipal building roof for a total amount not to exceed twenty-five thousand dollars and no cents, subject to the approval of the Corporation Council as to form. That is coming from ARPA, and that was approved. Uh, we had an additional new resolution presented to us, and this is a resolution to agree to a new parking management agreement with Premium Parking. Premium Parking is the current provider formerly known as Alpro. Did you give this to everybody, or just?
We did.
I, I, yeah.
I don't know if you want to touch base on it a little more, or?
Sure, yeah, yeah, happy to. So, uh, in the last year, year and a half, we've been looking at, uh, other potential, uh, parking solutions. We originally were approached by Alpro before they were bought out, uh, to do an automated gate system. So we, uh, did an RFP, we bid out for that, uh, they came in, uh, quite high. Uh, and in reviewing that with Alpro and reviewing it with the vendors, we said, maybe there's some other solution out there. And since that time, Alpro was, uh, purchased by Premium Parking, which is a, a larger, uh, parking agency that's, uh, nationwide. Uh, and so their, their system and, and many of their, uh, ramps and other locations, they have moved to a, uh, a, a gateless technology, uh, where they use a QR code, uh, to pay for your parking. Uh, and what they do with the employees that would be in the ramp, they have them walking the ramp, uh, during their normal shift, and they would be scanning license plates to make sure that you're paid, uh, and also, you know, dealing with anything that might be going on in the parking ramp. Uh, so that is the recommendation that we got from, uh, Alpro. They, we did have several bidders. Uh, they, uh, did come back, come in in the lowest, which was to basically maintain the costs, uh, that we currently have with those ramps. Uh, and they also, uh, added in an additional cost just for the one-time signage usage. So, uh, we were, we were quite, quite pleased to see that they were able to maintain at least our normal, uh, monthly operating costs, uh, and a really one-time fee for, uh, the signage, uh, and they would help, uh, kind of implement, uh, that, that program, so. It would look a little bit different, uh, but like you said, the cost for us to actually get the gated technology with a monthly fee, I think ranged from three to four hundred thousand dollars just for the installation, which was ex- was excessive. Uh, and when we look through that, we recognize that the majority of our parkers in those ramps are actually, um, monthly parkers. Um, we, we don't have a lot of, uh, cars that are what we call transient parkers, that are daily parkers there that might pay the fee. Uh, so we're paying an employee to take cash, to take cards, you know, to, to sit in that booth when maybe we saw twenty cars a day, uh, go through that. Uh, so it was, it didn't make a lot of sense in, in analyzing that, the recommendation was moving to a, a, a gateless technology. Uh, we did go, I actually went and took a look with Alpro at their, or Premium, at their lots in Buffalo. Other cities have moved to this kind of cashless method, uh, and it was, it was very easy to use, intuitive. When you got close to the time, you could add more, send you a text message, uh, which was, was quite, uh, quite good. Um, it doesn't address, as of right now, the issue of cash, although we are not taking a lot of cash in, period, uh, from those ramps. Uh, but we are, we will, will get with Alpro, Premium, and have a conversation with them about that as requested through the Finance Committee, uh, about what the cost would be if we wanted to add, uh, that type of machine to it as an alternative, uh, or in addition to. And, uh, you know, overall, this will kind of maintain and keep our current, uh, service levels, uh, the same.
Yeah, and we did talk about the gateless system would also help with emergency services in, uh, for the police patrols, and that is more of a hassle to go through with the gate.
And event parking would stay the same, there would still be someone there, uh, collecting for event parking.
Okay, anybody have any other questions?
Uh, I wanted, just back to number eight, as far as the roof, I'm assuming that's just for consultation services regarding the roof of, uh, City Hall?
Correct.
Or not, uh?
The engineering consultant. Any other questions on these?
You're talking the whole roof, not any, like, the plastic portion that's the leak, you're talking, yeah, that's what I thought.
Well, like Mark said, if we get the, uh, engineering out of the way, that's one thing that's out of the way, so we can proceed later.
No, no, I know, it's quite costly to do, which is what I have been done.
So the last item we had on our agenda, as you all are aware, I had asked Joe Belito to review the budget for twenty-twenty-three and twenty-twenty-four. Um, you should have a copy of the mayor's analysis from Joe's email that you all received. Joe's preliminary estimate concerned raised was that, um, we were in total somewhere around two and a half million short. The mayor had, his budget team has presented finance with details. I don't know, um, there if you want to touch the highs and the lows, but the bottom line is we are definitely off one point six in chips, for sure.
I, I think a little bit less than that, but, uh, I think there's, there is, I'm happy to talk about that.
What floor is yours?
Uh, so there is, uh, feel free to, to take a look through that, uh, as requested by the Finance Committee. We'll also send that, uh, to Joe as well and go through it. Uh, we wanted to provide you through, kind of the rationale and the backup for what we did in each of those categories. Uh, and so it might be, uh, we may have some difference, uh, from Joe based on just kind of how we put those together. Uh, but we wanted to make sure that you all had that backup information, and what the average costs have actually been, uh, the last several years, which is how we, uh, budgeted for each of those items. Uh, some of the things that Joe raised are things that have happened since he has left, and other, uh, things, deals that we have worked with the state on in order to provide additional funding. Um, the one issue that we have identified is the, uh, chips item. Uh, so typically when you have, uh, chips placed in the budget, we have chips going in, we have chips coming out. Uh, so we just had, uh, the one section, uh, for chips, uh, so we didn't appropriately have them both going in and going out. We only had part of them, uh, going out. Uh, so we have, uh, done some, we have kind of, uh, made some recommendations, uh, for potential changes, uh, for that. Uh, and so you'll, you'll notice that, you'll notice them here on your, on your sheet. Uh, so any budget amendments that would need to happen would come in twenty-twenty-four, uh, per the recommendation of NICOM, should you wish to make those, those changes. Uh, but, um, we've made some recommendations, uh, to, uh, reduce some things, uh, reclassify some things. The other thing that we will note is that, uh, we have, uh, chips allows us to get reimbursed for more things than we have in the past. As you may have noticed, we've asked, uh, council for approval to get equipment in some cases. Uh, we can also reimburse, and we have in the past reimbursed, uh, summer labor help and other things. Uh, so there are some items in the budget that already exist that actually go towards that, uh, that chips amount. Uh, and then we've also made s- a few other recommendations, uh, for moving some funding, uh, should you wish, going into twenty-twenty-four, uh, that would take care of that amount, so. Um, in the meantime, that sounds like a great spot to end. Uh, but in the meantime, we'll give this to, give this to Joe, and, uh, he is on vacation, I believe he's coming back. Uh, and, uh, we'll see what other additional questions that you all have.
What were your recommendations for funds that can be moved around?
Yep, so, take a look in the back of it. Um, one of the recommendations would be, uh, moving the demolition funds, uh, to chips. That's that five hundred thousand dollars, as well as the sidewalk funds. Uh, you know, in really working through that, uh, we think the demolitions are gonna be tough regardless, since, uh, you know, we'd love to take them all down, but I think a timing is gonna be a huge issue, uh, with the land bank already doing them, uh, and limited contractors. Uh, I think it'll be a little bit more difficult than anticipated, uh, as well as moving some of that sidewalk funding. Uh, moving those, uh, some adjustments for street maintenance as well, uh, should put us back into the, uh, the numbers that we're looking for. So we tried to respond to everything, and then also give you guys, uh, some solutions, uh, for it as well.
So the recommendation was to get this info to Joe and have him compare his numbers with those numbers, and then, and if, since we have been recommended not to make adjustments until twenty-twenty-four, we'll have some time to kind of figure out how to, how to proceed, how much is gonna go where, and how much do we actually need. That's correct.
Okay.
That's it, I'm fine.
All right, and.
Carol advised that, yes, the audit for twenty-twenty-two will not be completed till after the first year.
Brett, Andrew Public Safety?
Sure. Yeah. Uh, we have this same, uh, resolution, a finance lift for the Domestic Violence Intervention Program. This will pay for domestic violence advocate and a vehicle for the police officer, who will, the domestic violence police officer. That is approved. We can also approve, um, annual James of Chance or Bell Jar licenses for the twenty-twenty-four calendar, including Jamestown Lodge number two-six-three, people, P.T., Elks, Taco Area number two-one-five, the Eagles Incorporated, Jamestown Vietnam Veterans, and the ILS Veterans Club, that is approved. And we also approved tour rate cards, uh, for Williams Garage Record Services, due motors and auto credits. We had a report from, uh, Deputy Chief Coons that the Station Five, uh, roofwork is proceeding. However, it will not be done and completed until spring. However, it will not be done and completed until spring, um, and the roofing company can put on the final coat. But the engineering floor plans, uh, are submitted and that will be going out a bit soon for Station Five as well. So hopefully everything gets done about the same time and get our fire back into, um, Station Number Five. That was all we had.
Andy, public works?
Yes, everything that, uh, that we discussed has already been talked about as far as the, uh, the vendor for the parking ramps and for, uh, all the resolutions were covered in finance, which we approved, but it looks like we're gonna have to discuss the, uh, the lighting and the cameras as far as, you know, the funding and such. But everything else was pretty much covered earlier with us.
Just one question for maybe from Mark, um, had people ask, due to the weather, are they still doing anything with leaves so they are re-completed?
They are still going around. If you call our office and let us know you have a pile, we'll come pick it up.
Okay, thank you. It's pretty good, sir.
Like the medians on pipe.
Actually, they did those. They're pretty goo- hmm, I don't know.
Sorry, I'm not looking at that.
I did have someone on your street though ask.
Oh, really? Yeah.
Thank you. All right, I think that's it.
I have one thing. Um, ARPA, I know we don't have time to discuss it, but I accidentally printed it on fancy paper, so I'm gonna give you the updated.
No, that's not your paychecks.
Um, the items highlighted in re- in green are items that have been discussed with me and they are completed. Um, so.
And just informational.
This is informational. If you have any questions, email me. Um.
Anything else before we move on to mayor report? Floor is yours.
Uh, just one, uh, brief update for the city council. Uh, the, uh, the bus stop arm program, uh, warning period is underway. You guys may have seen some information about it in the police department. They also pushed it out. Uh, so individuals that are passing school buses will receive a warning ticket, uh, in their mailbox. And then, uh, after that, um, was it in thirty days? After a thirty-day period, uh, tickets will actually start appearing in people's mailboxes. So, uh, just as a reminder, uh, I saw this already happen, uh, last week. Uh, there are still people passing school buses. Uh, that's, you can't do that and you will get a very hefty fine. So I wanna continue to remind, remind folks about that. I, and other than that, I have, um, one item for executive session, which is, uh, current litigation.
Mayor, do you have the apartment payment with the current litigation issue?
No, I will check to see when, cause the, we had a little bit of a pickup of start date, so.
I believe it's December.
It's sometime in, sometime in December, we'll start later December. Two hundred and fifty dollars.
I have a question about our machine.
Carol?
What's that?
I have a quick question about our machine.
Sure.
The parks building roof. Is that typo or is that two hundred and ten thousand over? Is it four or fifth one down, fifth one down?
Um, it's what has been spent, um, and based on, uh, adjustments that were made in 2022. So that would definitely have to be considered as over. They went over the ARPA budget, so a resolution will have to be made either to readjust.
I think there's a second part of the roof on the.
There are, yeah, I think there were two, two adjustments that.
There's a roof number two.
Yeah, I think that's probably.
That's a hundred and twenty-nine thousand, eight hundred sh- over, but still a variance.
We'll take a look into that. Thank you for pointing out any. No, it wasn't, uh, when we originally got it, it wasn't too far off, so we'll.
No, um, and I noticed that there were, um, with, what's going on with the audit with 2022? There have been some adjustments made, then unadjusted, and then readjusted. And I think we're waiting until we get to the final audit to sit there and say, okay, this is what actually happened to get through the spreadsheet.
And could I ask the police chief, uh, how are the police, their, uh, data terminals, is that, was, are they all up and running? Or was that a succession or is that?
Yes, they're up and running.
I didn't know if it was still a working project. Okay, thank you.
Now, can I have a motion to move on to executive session? So move a second for current litigation. No action?
No action to be taken if we can have, uh, Mr. Armando, Mr. Turek, uh, stake.
All in favor?